Okay, we're gonna call the city council meeting for December 6th, 2016 to order. I'm gonna ask everybody to rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have a consent calendar for approval.
Do I get them?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That's about it. Okay, we have recognitions and presentations, and we have none. And that goes to item number five, which says, "Remarks by the outgoing city council member, me." So I guess I get the bully pulpit at this point. I just wanna thank, I'd like to say, thank my fellow council people, persons, women, men, and others, for just giving me a chance to be part of a super team. It was one of the best experiences of my life, where I got to learn about things that I would never have learned before. I especially wanna thank my wife, who's sitting in the office, because she was... That was your true mayor, that helped me...
She's a saint.
That was, that she helped me write, or she kinda pushed all my little articles that would go out, and without her, I'd probably look pretty dumb out there sometimes. I also wanna thank our city manager, who is a wordsmith, Gary Napper, for being our final editor, you know, on things going out, and then loving to hear the things back and forth that Debbie would say, "Well, he's not right about this," or "He should be doing it this way," and...
I never knew that.
I know, I didn't wanna tell ya. So, but usually you won, because I said, Gary knows. For Mala keeping me out of jail and not in trouble, you know, and...
And it was hard.
I'm sure there were times that I was up here that, if we watched Mala's face as she cringed waiting to see if I was gonna cross that line a little bit more. And hopefully I didn't give you too much tourist, as they say in Jewish, you know. But Janet, for always looking after me and taking care of all my needs when I called, and the rest of the city staff that we have. We have a great city staff. Our council is out here, and we're the public figure that you look at and see and you think we're really making all the decisions. Council makes policy, our city employees take over, and they run the city, and I have to say they've done a heck of a job for a long time. So with that, I just wanna say, it's not goodbye, I'm gonna still do the concerts, I'm gonna still be very active in what's happening in the city, except I'm gonna be on the other side of this table, and gonna be able to speak my piece when I need to, when I want to. So watch out, guys, you know? It's not goodbye.
And not to be outdone, but we have a small token of appreciation for years of service, but not only of service to the city council, but as mayor. And so on behalf of the city council, the city staff, and the citizens, we'd like to present you with this memento and a reflection of your years of service. Thank you very much.
With that, I'm gonna walk off, right?
Yes.
Should I turn that over?
No, thank you, Mr. Former Mayor. It moves quickly. At this time, before we concede the new council members, it's an interesting protocol, but the meeting actually transfers to the city clerk, who is the keeper of the election, so to speak, and I'll turn it over to our city clerk Janet Brown for the administration of the Osev Office to those newly elected individuals, and invite newly elected council member Tuya Catalano to come on up and join Julie Pierce and Mr. Diaz.
All right, thank you, Mr. Napper. So if I can have Julie Gemantuya come on up, so I can perform your oath of allegiance for public office. Thanks. Get in there, Tuya, get in there. Thank you for coming up. If you could please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Mr. Diaz.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to.
And allegiance to.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well.
And I will well.
And faithfully discharge.
And faithfully discharge.
The duties upon.
The duties upon.
Which I am about to enter.
Which I am about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You can have that.
Please.
Welcome, welcome.
Thank you.
Tuya's down here.
Oh, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
the first part of the agenda, we'll now move into the annual reorganization for the city council, and at this point, we'll hold open the election for mayor of the city council and the city of Clayton.
Mr. Mayor, it would be my honor to nominate you as the vice mayor, Jim Diaz, as our next mayor.
Second.
Moved in second. Any further nominations? All those in favor signify support by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So ordered.
Congratulations.
There you go. Thank you. Now, we will move on to the second item under number seven, and that's the election of the vice mayor. And at this time, we will open up for nominations for vice mayor.
I nominate council member Hayden.
Second.
Moved in second. Any further nominations? Any discussion? Hearing none, all those signify support by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So ordered. At this time, we're gonna have a number of comments from the new council members and those existing that are still on the council, to kinda reflect on what we've just been through. And at this time, I'll turn it over to Julie Pierce to recognize first her contributions to this city.
Well, thank you, and I am deeply honored to have been reelected by the citizens of Clayton for yet another term, and will do absolutely everything I can to support that trust. But you know, I also want to say thank you to Howard, because Howard, you have done a splendid job for the last eight years. You have worked really hard, you have been extremely diligent, you have copious notes always, I will miss that sticky pad up here, 'cause whenever I needed a place to grab a piece of paper, it was always there. So Jim, we might have to install one for you.
Okay, thank you.
Anyway, but you know, Howard has been a tireless volunteer here in the city of Clayton, and he will continue to be a volunteer. He just won't have to spend every other Tuesday night here, and he won't have those long packets to read. So I am wishing you both all the best. I have a gift I actually left in the car, 'cause I was scrambling to get in here in time, but I'll give that to you when we take our break. But I wanna thank you both, and I am looking forward to yet another year of Concerts in the Grove. We're a good team there, and I'm not letting him off the hook for that one. He may get out of meetings, but he's not getting out of the concerts. So anyway, thank you, Howard, good job. Thank you, Debbie, for your support. I know it's always a team effort when anybody is on the council, the family, the spouse, everybody has to support. And so thank you very, very much. And thank you to the citizens for reelecting me to yet another term.
Thank you. The new vice mayor, would you like to offer any comments?
Certainly, I'll start off by congratulating our newest member, Tuya. Welcome to the council, look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
Worked with you on the planning commission, so very happy that you were elected, and will be serving Clayton now on the council, so that's excellent. And Julie, and Jim, both, for being reelected. So I think Clayton will be well represented as we move forward for the next few years here. I also wanna reinforce the recognition to Howard Geller and his wife Debbie. They were a strong team. Howard has really worked hard for Clayton. I don't think people realize what's expected of the mayor. You see him here, leading the council meetings, but he also attends and represents the city in a number of different functions, number of different meetings, and Howard always did an excellent job, was always prepared, had excellent comments, and represented our city well in many different functions. So he will be missed, and a hard act to follow, but Jim will certainly rise up to that, I'm sure. Debbie was a great assistance. Howard, as you probably all know, initiated the concert series, and as Julie indicated, he's not off the hook on that, but he's volunteered to do that, and that's a wonderful service that he's providing to Clayton, and he will continue. So I wanna thank you for all of your efforts, both with that and with former efforts with the CBCA, and you've always been a great citizen, participant in Clayton activities. So we appreciate it, Howard.
That's a member, Julie.
First of all, congratulations to the three of you. The city chose wisely, and I think we're going to be very well represented for the four years you're all going to be here. And congratulations on mayor.
Thank you.
That it's a good honor, and I'm sure you're gonna do a great job. Howard's head is already swelled, but I'm gonna add to it, and that is, most of you in the audience are those that are movers and shakers in town, and it is truly, without any hesitation, that I can say that if, all the time that I've spent on the city council and the community services commission, there's probably less than five people that can, I can honestly say, would even come close to what Howard has done for the city, both as a council member, as a CBCA member, as a citizen, and for him to come and give us eight years, and I remember Debbie struggled with the second term, and for him to give us eight years, we are truly blessed, and I'm just, I'm very proud to have served with you. You did a fantastic job. Most people won't ever understand the depths of the commitment and the work that you did for the city, but I certainly do, and I just want everybody to know, it was a pleasure serving with you. Thank you.
And now to our newest member of the city council, Tuya.
Well, great, thank you. So I do wanna also share a couple thank yous. You know, it's a very humbling experience to run for the city council. You know, you think you've done a few things in the city, and you think you know a few people, but then you very quickly realize that you do not know as many people as you need votes. So I think my count was somewhere above 3,000, and I certainly don't know 3,000 people in Clayton, so it's a very humbling experience. And so first and foremost, I really wanna thank the people who voted for me and trusted me in this capacity. I also wanna thank everyone who in some way helped me with this campaign. There's a lot of work that goes into it, you know, from those people who signed my nomination papers early on, to those who, you know, took a yard sign, or, you know, helped distribute flyers and otherwise support me, so I really appreciate that. I do wanna also acknowledge my husband and my kids. I don't know that they volunteered for this task, but...
Great job.
They did distribute, and walked the streets and distribute some flyers with me, so I do appreciate that. I think there's one person I really wish who could have been here and would have known this today, and that's my dad, who passed away a few years ago, but he, when I was a child, he was on a number of different county boards, and sort of the apple didn't fall too far, I think, in that respect, but... So I think that said, I'm very happy to be here today. I think many of you know that I'm a native of Finland, and if you don't know, you'll figure out my accent pretty soon. So today also happens to be the 99th Independence Day of Finland, so it's quite an awesome day to end it here today with the swearing-in ceremony. So I'm very much looking forward to serving the community in this capacity. Really wanna thank everybody for the trust and support to the campaign, and I'm very much looking forward to serving with all of you. So thank you.
Thank you. I too wanna thank the citizens of Clayton for reelecting me, and I look back over the number of years that I sought the office, and it took a little while, but a little perseverance and some tenacity, and I was able to succeed. And I wanna thank all of the community, I wanna thank my wife, Dana, who is with me here tonight. She's always been extremely supportive of my endeavors and what I do, and you can't get along without having that kind of support at home. Howard, you know, I reflect back on the first time I encountered Howard, and I was the brand-new chair of the Clayton Classic, which by the way, I was the final chair of the Clayton Classic, but this one was, I don't recall when it was, but I get a call from him one day, and he was very supportive and very helpful in trying to help me guide how to make that a very successful event, which, for the people that, in this community that participated in that, 30 years is what we did it, and my group and my foursome played in all those, but Howard was very, very helpful, 'cause it was a call out of the blue, and offered nothing but full support to that effort, and we had a great run with the Clayton Classic through the CBCA. Howard's done a number of things through that organization, including the Art and Wine Festival, now the Concerts in the Grove, which I look forward to working with him again next year, when that continues on, and that truly will be one of his legacies that he leaves to this town, because it's not only that Clayton, the citizens of Clayton actually come to that event, but they come from the entire county and as far away as Sacramento to see the successful event that Howard started some, what, 10 years ago, that has been, it becomes a bigger success each year after that. But thank you again for your service, and we look forward to continuing to work on that event as well. I know that there are some people out there that came to support me tonight, and I really wanna recognize them. One is one of my oldest friends, I can't even remember how long ago it was, but Nick Montano and I actually served on the police department here back in the mid-'70s. God, it seems, what has that been, 40 years ago?
You're dating yourself.
I know, but I wanna tell you, the one thing that Nick initiated, that I always mention when I talk about him, is he was one of the first officers to begin the bicycle patrol, and it's now very prevalent through many communities, but Nick was instrumental in getting it started here in Clayton, because you can't always get a rod in the vehicles, and so he decided to try that out, and it was a very success, and now other communities have mirrored that, and it seems to be a great thing that he started here some 40 years ago. So my friend Nick Montano. I see in the back a number of the police people that I have associated with over the years, Sergeant Tim Marshu, but more importantly, I see Rich Anea Sr. back there. Rich goes back, he's now retired from the department. His son, Rich Junior, is now a member of the Clayton Police Department, and continuing to serve and continue to keep the name Anea prominent in what's going on in our agency. Also, I see Gary Hood out there, and you know, a very interesting guy about Gary Hood. He was one of the biggest, oh, he was one of the biggest opponents to the Bocce phenomenon that's taken over Clayton, but now I come down on a Monday after, or Monday evening over the Bocce court, and who's on court number one? But Gary Hood and his team. It all happens, it turns around. Anyway, and I wanna thank them. I also see Sandy Johnson from out, from the police department also out there. I know that there's some people that would like to come up and speak on, about Howard, and I know that our state senator's representative, Steve Glazer, has a representative here that would like to present a proclamation to you, Howard. I'll call up Elizabeth.
Should I face this way, then?
Why don't we, here, why don't you come up here and take this?
Yes. Thank you. Okay, I'm Elizabeth from Senator Glazer's office, and I know you and the senator have had, you know, a good relationship, and he just really wants to honor you today. It's a great day, so I'll read this resolution for you.
Howard, come on up.
Do you wanna come up here?
Yeah.
Hold it, dual hold, or, okay. Okay. Whereas Howard Geller is retiring after eight years of dedicated service on the Clayton City Council, it is appropriate to highlight his many achievements and accomplishments, and extend special recognition to him for his civic leadership, and whereas his service in Clayton has been commendable, servicing also as an active member of the Clayton Business and the Community Association since 1984, and serving as its president twice. And whereas Howard Geller's work to enhance Clayton has extended throughout his 40-plus years of residency, including one of the founders of Clayton's Art and Wine Festival, which is in its 22nd year, co-chaired CBCA's annual golf tournament, co-chaired the former Clayton Roundup for many years, as a founder and promoter of Clayton's Concert in the Grove Park Series, which is in its ninth year this summer, and as a committee member for the development of Clayton's Westwood Park. And whereas Howard Geller has served the city of Clayton in many capacities, including serving on the East Contra Costa County Habitat Conservancy, as a city liaison to Contra Costa Water District, a member of the Contra Costa Transit Authority, a member of the East Bay Division of the League of California Cities, currently on the Clayton Valley Charter High Schools Advisory Board, and as a city council member and a two-term mayor. And whereas Howard Geller has continuously given back to the Clayton community through his commitment to family, profession, civic duty, and philanthropic contributions, be it resolved by Senator Stephen M. Glazer that Howard Geller of Contra Costa County, California, is commended and recognized for his commitment to the city of Clayton and beyond. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I have a picture for Tamara, you know? There you go.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Steve.
Yes, of course. Thank you.
I do have a speaker's card, and Dominic, you wanna come up and address the council? Dominic Aliano, not only a planning commissioner from the city of Concord, but also a representative of Supervisor Karen Mitchoff.
Come on up here.
Come on up here, Dominic.
Thanks, thank you. Supervisor Karen Mitchoff regrets that she couldn't have been here, but on her behalf, we would like to present you with a certificate for your years of service, and it's been truly an honor and a pleasure to have met you, and to have met all these council members, the community, to have gone to be a part of this community, and it was really warming when I first started in the community to have you guys take me in and be part of all the events, and I really enjoyed it, so thank you.
Thank you.
We get a lot of people that help represent our councilmen and assemblymen and everything, but Dominic is just special. I wanna thank Dominic, because Dominic doesn't come here just to read a speech. Dominic has embraced the city of Clayton, he works at the Art and Wine Festival, he works at any event that's out there, he comes to the CBC meetings, he's part of our community, and welcome for that. Thank you.
I have another card from Stephen Cross. Are you gonna be addressing this at this point, or you wanna speak later in the program?
I think I'll speak later.
Okay, thank you. Okay, at this time, we're gonna take a short break for a little social activity, and then we'll reconvene after that with the balance of the business. We have some cake and water, so we'll stand adjourned. And I'm gonna reconvene the meeting at 7:45 PM, and we're gonna begin with the reports. Item number eight on the agenda, the first is the planning commission, there was no meeting, trails and landscapes, there was no meeting, city staff.
Man, the new mayor's tough.
Zipping along, isn't he? Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of the council. First off, on behalf of staff, we wanted to add to the gratitude that was expressed this evening for Howard Geller. Many of you know I'm in probably one of the more unique positions to be able to see the amount of time that an individual does things as the mayor, and I can tell you that this, you know, Howard, I kinda refer to him, I think of him as citizen mayor. He really was integral into the community, he has been in part of a lot of different roles in the community, and he has been in city hall quite often, almost to the point we didn't want him there, but no. And Howard goes, yes, that's true. But no, we appreciate that, because there are many things that need to be done, checks to be signed, resolutions to be signed, and then he'll just come in and chat with staff and just keeping his pulse on the community. So, you know, Howard, on behalf of staff and myself personally, we thank you for all those years and dedication, and we appreciate you, and you'll be missed. As much as you'll be missed, we'll miss Debbie even more, though. And then my, our appreciation and thanks to the newly elected council members, the attorneys of council member Pierce and Mayor Diaz, as well as greetings to our newest council member, council member Catalano. We look forward to working with you. I have some reservations about the fact that now I am literally surrounded by attorneys. There are two attorneys on that end, there's an attorney now on this end, and then I have one over here, so I cannot fail.
Gary, my degree's from Kmart, so you don't need to worry.
That's right, so we got, you know, four out of five, and I'm sure Mayor Diaz will own up to his shingle as well.
We feel very confident now.
Yeah. So we know that every contract, every resolution will be scrutinized, but we appreciate that, look forward to a great next year with the entire city council that is now seated. And congratulations again to Vice Mayor Hayden for his election, and we look forward to who's gonna get the Jihad chair. I know that he does. Anyway, we're here to help you and to help serve your needs and your constituents, just as a matter of information, many in the public probably don't realize it, 'cause they didn't see the resolution, but the Clayton turnout, for the number of registered voters, the Clayton turnout, the people who cast ballots, was 85.6%.
Hmm.
So that means, as you all know, there is an active citizenry in this town that is interested, not only in the national elections, but also the local elections, and so we certainly appreciate them, they're the eyes and ears of our small organization, they help us out to let us know when things are up. So with that in mind, that's my report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, we now go to the city council reports, and this is...
Excuse me, I'm sorry, I did have one official item. When you leave the city, sometimes you get a key to the city, but when you come into the city, you get a working key to city hall. I'm gonna give this to council member Catalano, this is her key to city hall.
Right. Okay, city council for the reports on their various regional committees, and we'll start off with our new vice mayor.
Thank you. Thank you.
Around Thanksgiving, it was a little slower than normal, luckily, so we were able to enjoy time with family. On Wednesday, November 16th, I did attend a library foundation committee meeting, and you saw the, one of the results of that meeting was a contribution from the foundation back to the city of Clayton to help pay for the overtime that the city pays for staffing the library, which was part of the original agreement, that we agreed to, to get our wonderful library here in Clayton. We also had a Marsh Creek Multi-Use Trail meeting scheduled for that day, but it was rescheduled till next week. Then on Thursday, the 1st, a number of us went to the mayor's conference in Pittsburgh, and then on Saturday, a number of us also attended the Christmas tree lighting put on by the CBCA, and had a wonderful turnout, over 1,000 people attended for both the caroling in the park, and the tree light of the tree in the gazebo in the park, and then walked down Main Street and participated. down Main Street and participated in the lighting of the city tree there across from the bocce court. So that's always a real nice occasion and well attended. So did those two efforts.
Thank you. Councilmember Shuey.
Nothing to add to that.
Thank you. Do you have anything to add, Councilmember?
I don't think I do. I mean, I was at the Christmas tree lighting as well and that was a very nice event. So, but that's it.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Pierce.
I'm sorry, but yes, there are things to report. Since our last meeting, there have been three weeks and I had the honor of appearing before the, a San Jose Business Group called the Registry Forecast Group. It's a group of businesses, primarily developers, real estate folks, down in San Jose wanting an update on projections about the growth in the Bay Area and particularly for the San Jose area. And as president of ABAG, they asked me to come and make a presentation on Plan Bay Area. And so I went down there that same day. That was followed by a Metropolitan Transportation Commission meeting in San Francisco and a Contra Costa Transportation Authority meeting in Pleasant Hill, which meant that I actually ran the entire bay that day, drove the whole thing because very little of it was actually accessible by BART, certainly not the San Jose part. Also attended the regular monthly meeting of the Association of Bay Area Governments, of which I am president. Had that same evening, a joint meeting between the Metropolitan Transportation Commission and ABAG where we adopted the final preferred scenario for the Plan Bay Area, which will be adopted next, next summer. And so that goes into the EIR mode and that sort of thing. Still working on the merger between those two agencies. Also had a Bay Area Regional Collaborative Meeting, which is the Bay Area Air Quality Management Group, the Bay Conservation Development Commission, the Metropolitan Transportation Commission, and the Association of Bay Area Governments, where we talk about all things regional and try to make sure we're not stepping on each other's toes and that we are working collaboratively in the same direction instead of going in diverse ways and try to benefit from all the work that we are all doing together. Had a couple of committee meetings for the Contra Costa Transportation Authority. Attended the mayor's conference, which was a very nice event. The holiday meeting is always a wonderful one to get to see most of the other elected officials. We greeted a lot of new ones and we said a sad goodbye to some of our colleagues who chose to retire or were not reelected. Attended the tree lighting and got to have a hug from Santa and take pictures of my grandkids with him. So that was awesome. And then I left on Sunday and just got back this evening from the Self Help Counties Conference. The Self Help Transportation Half-Cent Sales Tax Counties hold an annual conference somewhere in the state. And we celebrated four counties who have not had a transportation sales tax before. We helped them celebrate their first. Unfortunately, we were also mourning our loss and San Diego's loss and San Francisco's loss in the most recent election. But we do have four new counties on board, so we now have 23 of the counties in the state of California who raised money to fund their own transportation projects because the state's not doing it, folks. Although there is a new bill that just got floated yesterday from both the Senate and the Assembly that will try yet again to get a measure passed to work on infrastructure in the state, but most of us don't hold up a lot of hope for that. And I wanted to do one reminder quickly. The Clayton Historical Society will be hosting its Christmas Homes Tour on December 11th from 12 to 6:00 and tickets are available at claytonhistory.org. And it's a PayPal site and you can pay with a credit card or you can download a form and mail your check in. But it's going to be a great event and it's one of two major fundraisers for our local nonprofit, the Historic Society. So going to be a lot of fun.
Thank you. Rather light for me, other than we had, I attended on, back in November, the 17th, the County Connection Board meeting and nothing real eventful at that meeting. You know, there were just some procedural things that the Connection Board was working on. I did too attend the mayor's conference in Pittsburgh, but preceding that, a number of us were given a tour of the Pittsburgh Police Department's camera room, where they have in excess of 130 cameras looking over the entire area, including the area near railroad and Highway 4. And for those of you that may recall, that was a very tenuous area due to some unknown shots being taken at some of the vehicles traveling by on Highway 4. But since that camera installation, which also includes licensed police readers, there have been zero further shootings down there in Pittsburgh. So well, people are breathing a sigh of relief over there about that. And then the mayor's conference as Julie announced. And then last Saturday, also attended the tree lighting ceremonies and then afterwards the CBCA holiday event. That concludes that. And now we'll go on to item number nine, which is for public comment on non-agenda items. And I have one card and that's Stephen Cross. If you would come up to the podium there, we'd love to hear from you.
Hi, I'm Stephen Cross. I'm representing the Center for Human Development. Our address is 901 Sun Valley Boulevard, Suite 220, Concord, 94520. Thank you for putting me between people and cake tonight. That was very scary. I have never been to a city council meeting, so this seems to be a good one to attend. I appreciate the free cake. I'm here just to share what we do at the Center for Human Development. I'm in charge of our mediation program. We have elder mediation, family mediation, neighbor mediation, and pretty much anything within the community where two parties seem to not, they can't find a solution to their problem. We bring them into a room for up to three hours with two volunteer mediators who basically prevents people from being nasty, taking, and they don't take sides themselves. And we have over 90% success rate with finding a resolution. Now, the trouble is getting our name out there, getting people to know we're available because once they get in their rooms, we find a high success rate. I started in November, so I'm here just spreading the word. If, we do a sliding scale, so if people can't afford it, it's free. So yeah, this is my first city council meeting and I thank you.
Well, thank you for coming out.
Thank you.
I have no other cards and if there's anyone else that would like to speak on a non-agenda item, please come forward. Here we go. We'll close that portion of the agenda and move on to item number 10, I believe. And public hearings. And we're going to have a continued discussion on the review and consideration of the St. John's Episcopal Church. And I'll turn that over to Milan, our associate planner.
Mr. Mayor.
Excuse me.
We might. I think Councilmember Catalano has a statement to make.
Yeah, so I mean, I was at the Planning Commission meeting on October 25th, but I was not at the November 15 meeting at the city council for this item, but I have watched all the tapes and reviewed all the materials, so will be able to participate today.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you, new Mayor Diaz, members of the council, staff and the public. Our first public hearing item tonight, as you mentioned, is a continued public hearing, oops, excuse me, continued public hearing for the St. John's Episcopal Church Mixed Use Plan Development Project. Now, as the council may recall, at the November 15 meeting, the request entails seven entitlements total. And with that, there'll be four decisions that the council can consider to make. Now, three of the entitlements each have their own resolution or in the case of the zoning amendment, an ordinance. So you have the environmental, which has its own resolution, the general plan amendment, which has its own resolution, the rezone has its own ordinance. And then the last four entitlements are clustered together under one resolution. And that would be the development plan, tentative map, site plan review permit, and lastly, the tree removal permit. As you recall, the St. John's Episcopal Church project is located at Quadruple 5 Clayton Road and there's an overview of it. It's outlined in red. Again, Clayton Road's here on the south side, Southbrook Drive on the north. This project site has two frontages. On Southbrook Drive on the north, that's where the applicant's proposing to place the two residences that the council reviewed. And then the church parcel will remain untouched as the third component of that, third property. And that'll be again, placing onto Clayton Road. And so going quickly here, I'll show you a photo again. I think this assisted the council in understanding the project a little better. This is how it looks now. The, there's an old wooden retaining wall that's going to be removed there along Southbrook Drive. And this is what we're proposing to have constructed there, two single-family residences. And so I'll move forward here. Again, at the November 15 meeting, the city council reviewed the project and provided direction to staff and the applicant on three issues. Number one was a second-story window on the side elevation of the proposed home. And this is the side elevation that faces the existing properties. So the home on Lot A would be its right side or west elevation. The home on Lot B would be the left side or east elevation. So number one was that second-story window proposed on both those side elevations of both residences. Number two was the need for a six-foot fence on the north property line, if approved, the north, what would be the north property line of the church parcel that would back up to the rear property line of both residential lots. And number three, evaluation of a no parking area in the shared driveway. So we'll go to the first issue. Here's the proposed elevation. Now, the window in question, let me back up here and I'll show you what was initially proposed that was brought to the council's attention by a concerned neighbor who felt there'd be privacy impacts from this window right here. So you see the second-story window, typical window, but kind of large. The neighbor felt like privacy impacts because he has a second, or excuse me, a single-story residence and his property's a bit lower obviously than the second story of this residence. So he felt that the people that own this new home would be able to look down into his property and likewise that, you know, they might be affected as well. So it wasn't a one-way thing. He was concerned that they would have privacy impact. So what the applicant did is he worked with the neighbor and he came up with this right here. So instead of the big window, now we have this smaller window. Forget the name of it, but anyway, there's an actual technical architectural term for this type of window. But regardless, the bottom of that window is six feet from the finished floor. So you figure the bottom of it's six feet, top of roughly eight feet. Again, it's only for light and that's it basically. So it's not something that somebody, unless they're really tall, could really look out of into the neighboring property and vice versa. You know, the neighbor couldn't look up into the bedroom or whatever room that's going to be. I think was initially proposed as a great room. So there's the revised window and staff has provided the condition. Also, the concerned neighbor has had a chance to review that revised window and has submitted an email saying that he is in support of that new revised window. So moving on to the next issue, there was the existing fence along what would be the north property line of the property. And you can see it here, it's a split rail wood fence, somewhat dilapidated, kind of falling apart here, very short.
It's called antique, Milan.
Antique. All right, I won't say dilapidated, it's antique, rustic. And it's a short fence, so you know, anybody could stand over and look at what would be, that's the area that the two homes are proposed. You know, Lot A is kind of here on the left and Lot B on the right and there's Southbrook Drive in the distance. And so somebody could easily stand over the fence and look. And not to mention the design of the fence itself is somewhat see-through. So the council requested that the applicant construct a six-foot good neighbor fence, a solid wood good neighbor fence. And so what I've provided here is sort of a cross-section. And this is an amended cross-section. Initially, this cross-section did not include some of the information I'm about to point out to you. And so here's the retaining wall. So this is a side section. So we got Southbrook Drive over here. And then here's the pad for the residential lot. And then here's a retaining wall, which was already proposed before. But this in red, I tried to make, you know, I colored it in yellow so you could see where the grade level is. So this is the parking lot. There's a retaining wall, this is the pad, and you can see then it steps down to Southbrook Drive. So the yellow is sort of the ground, if you will. So the retaining wall's here. And then here is the new fence, proposed six feet in height. There's a condition also has been provided as well. I believe that was condition number two, going from memory here. And then condition four would address the window. But what we've done is worked with the applicant on making sure that the six-foot fence is a minimum of three feet from the top of the footing of the retaining wall, as is required by the code in Section 1736 under general regulations. And so he's actually indicated, the applicant, that is, to staff that the fence would be more than three feet. But given, you know, as things get constructed, which I'm sure familiar with, things may change a little bit. So we just want to make sure at a minimum, he had a minimum of three feet between those two structures, the fence and retaining wall. And that was in order to avoid them being counted as one structure, which would then make it a 12-foot structure, which we would not want. So that's been complied with. And then lastly, there was a comment regarding providing parking, no parking, I should say, no parking. I'm going to go to landscape plan because that seems to really, due to the landscaping they've provided here on this diagram, you can really see the shared driveway a bit better. So there's a shared driveway and the property line goes right down the middle, splitting it in half. And then, you know, the driveway goes into the garage on this house and then over here into the garage on that house. And there was what I believe Councilmember Shuey called the basketball court area here. This is sort of the southern terminus, if you will, of that shared driveway. And there was discussion about making a no parking area, whether it be in front of the garages or in the basketball court areas, we're calling it. And so the applicant did work with the fire protection district and staff did provide in the staff report, the stamped approved plans. The fire protection district had a chance to review it, review it for access and water availability and approved the plans. And also there was a letter submitted as well that, well, a document, I'll say, that says that shared driveway is not needed for fire safety purposes because they can access it from Southbrook Drive and literally wrap around each home twice with the hose length. So what I provided here, I'll go back to my hose length diagram. So here's the home on parcel A. So this would be the northwest corner, Southbrook Drive up here. And here's where, you know, fire safety vehicle could park. And here's the hose reach. I've outlined it for you, going around both sides. So adequate access for fire safety purposes. And they again have indicated they do not need the shared driveway for this, so they can provide everything from the street. So that's the home on Lot A. Here's the proposed home on Lot B. In the fire safety vehicle in purple, and then I've highlighted in yellow the hose reach. See, there's adequate hose reach there. And so that has been addressed as well. Also, the applicant indicated that the, one of the benefits of this project in terms of a selling point perhaps would be to leave that shared driveway available for vehicles that, you know, basically are associated with these homes. So, and the applicant can respond to questions further about, if the council may have some more. But that was one of the, sort of the benefits of it. And so there was strong interest in keeping that open and available for parking and not having any no parking area. So, and then lastly, this wasn't an issue for research at all or something that staff had to provide a condition for, but there was a comment that was made about the question on where the stormwater detention basins were located. And so staff has provided a revised diagram on Attachment 10. And you can see the stormwater detention basins, as I'd indicated, and I'll point them out on the landscape plan. So one is around about here and then the other one's around here, which I indicated at the last meeting. But there is a diagram, Attachment 10, you can see them. Now, that may move slightly. It'll still be basically in the same area, but the applicant is working with the city engineer on a stormwater control plan and that includes an operation and maintenance agreement and whatnot. So they're going to be getting into the weeds on that with a fine-tooth comb, making sure that that is addressed. And so with that, staff would like to make its recommendations. And again, there's going to be four of them. One for each of the resolutions and then there's an ordinance, like I said. So on the first one, recommendation, a motion to approve a city council resolution adopting the St. John's Church, Southbrook Drive, Mixed Use Development Project Initial Study and mitigated negative declaration and mitigation monitoring and porting program. Next would be a motion to approve a city council resolution adopting a general plan amendment for the 0.41 acres, essentially the two residential lots of the project site, from institutional density to single-family medium density. The next would be the ordinance related to the zoning amendment. So there's, that's kind of a two-parter. The first part would be a motion to have the city clerk read city council ordinance number 471 by title and number only and waive further reading. And number two, following the clerk's reading, a motion to approve city council ordinance number 471, rezoning the project site from agricultural district to planned development district. And then lastly, this is the, kind of the big all encapsulating one, a motion to approve the city council resolution approving the development plan. to approve the City Council Resolution approving the development plan, tentative parcel map, site plan review permit and tree removal permit for the project. That concludes our presentation. And staff's available for any questions.
Thank you. Any questions from the council before we open up for the public comment? None? Okay, at this time, we'll open up this item for public comment. Anybody wishing to speak on that can come forward and please state your name. No one wishes to speak?
To us.
Okay, then we'll close the public hearing on this item and bring it back to the council. And we'll enter, yes?
Yeah, I would just like to thank the residents, the developer, everybody for working on this and, and addressing the concerns that we had. I think you're going to have a lovely project. I just think it's gonna be really, really nice. And it'll be a good addition for the neighborhood and take care of an, an area that was somewhat blighted along Southbrook Drive. And, and actually, a location that, when I used to live in Westwood, was a bit of a location for mischief from some of the, the local kids. So, anyway, I, I just think it's a great, great project. Unless somebody else has a comment, I'd be happy to start the motions. Go ahead.
I'll just add to that and thank staff and the neighborhood for resolving what we identified as our concerns at our last meeting. And that's the only reason we didn't recommend adoption at that time. But it sounds like all of those issues have been dealt with fairly and everyone is satisfied with them. So, very comfortable with these solutions.
Thank you.
Okay, I would move adoption of the resolution adopting the final initial, initial study negative declaration and mitigation monitoring and reporting program, ENVO 1-15.
Second? All those in favor signify support by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? That is ordered.
I would further move adoption of the resolution approving a general plan amendment to modify the land use designation of .41 acres of the project site from institutional density to single-family medium density, GPA 01-15.
And second, moved to second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all who'll signify support by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Ordered.
Preemptive second.
I would move to have the city clerk read ordinance 471 ZOA 03-15 by title and number only and waive further reading.
Second. Moved to second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all who'll signify support by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed?
Ordinance Number 471, an ordinance of the Clayton City Council amending the Clayton zoning map from agricultural District A to planned development District P D for 2.77 acres that comprise the St. John's Church/Southbrook Drive Mixed-Use Plan Development Project.
Thank you.
I would move that we approve ordinance 471 for introduction.
Second. Moved to second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all who'll signify support by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Ordered.
I would further move that we adopt the resolution approving the development plan, DP 01-15, tentative subdivision map, MAP 01-15, site plan review permit, SPR 07-16, and tree removal permit, TRP-37-15 for the St. John's Episcopal Church, Southbrook Drive, Mixed-Use Plan Development Project.
Do it, do it, do it. Any second?
Second.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all who'll signify support by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Ordered. All right.
Good job.
Thank you, Milan. All right, we'll now move to you.
Thank you. Thanks, Armin. I appreciate it.
Hey, Milan, we gave you a box of 48 crayons. You used two colors. Do not repeat them.
Okay, thank you.
Well, thank you. Thank you all.
I don't know what happened. The whole room was hit the air.
Okay, we'll now move into a public hearing item, 10B. This is to consider the adoption of the urgency ordinance Number 472, extending the interim local moratorium for an additional 10 months to 15 months, or, excuse me, 15 to 10 months and 15 days on the operation and establishment of a parolee home and the community supervision program within the city of Clayton Mindy.
Thank you and good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. This item on the agenda is to adopt urgency ordinance placing a moratorium on parolee homes and community supervision programs. If you remember, at the November 1 council meeting, the City Council adopted ordinance Number 469, which placed a 45-day moratorium on these uses. The 45 days didn't provide staff with adequate time to draft regulations and present them in front of both the Planning Commission and City Council for review and consideration. And due to the uses associated with the community supervision program, including the parolee homes, are not defined within the city's municipal code. So, as we just indicated, the City Council adopted ordinance Number 469 due to concerns regarding the potential for negative impacts to public health, safety and welfare, particularly if there were a dense concentration of these uses located next to sensitive uses such as schools, daycare centers and parks. So, the adoption of this ordinance will provide additional time for staff to research, study and draft regulations for consideration by both the Planning Commission and the City Council. It's not anticipated that staff will need an extension beyond the 10 months and 15 days in order to draft these regulations for consideration. So, it's recommended that the City Council motion to have the city clerk read ordinance Number 472 by title and number only and waive further reading. And then, secondly, a motion to adopt ordinance 472 to prohibit the establishment, construction and operation of community supervision programs and parolee homes for 10 months and 15 days with the finding that the project is not considered under SEQA. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. And we'll take it, before we take any public comments, any comments from the council? None? Then we'll open it up for public comment. At this time, anybody wishing to address this item, please come forward and state your name. No one coming forward, so we'll close the public hearing and we'll move on the item.
I move we have the city clerk read urgency ordinance Number 472 by title and number only and waive further reading.
Second. Moved to seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all signify support by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you.
Ordinance Number 472, an urgency ordinance making findings and extending a temporary moratorium on the establishment and operation of parolee homes and community supervision programs for a period of 10 months and 15 days.
I move we adopt urgency ordinance Number 472 with the findings of adoption of this ordinance is not subject to the California Environmental Quality Act because SEQA only applies to projects which have the potential for causing a significant effect on the environment. And this activity is not considered to be a project and can be seen with certainty that it will not have a significant effect or physical change to the environment.
Second. Moved to seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all who'll signify support by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Ordered. Okay, action item number 11. Consider the second reading and adoption of a proposed city-initiated ordinance Number 470, updating the Clayton Municipal Code Title 17 Zoning, Section 17.80, Water Conservation Landscape Guidelines Concerning City Water Efficient Landscaping Standards and Regulations for State Mandate, Mindy.
Thank you. As you just indicated, this is a proposed second reading and adoption of a city-initiated ordinance pertaining to the water conservation landscape standards. And just a little refresher, the ordinance was introduced at the last city council meeting on November 15. And no changes to the ordinance were made. And in essence, this ordinance is implementing the executive order that was passed by Governor Brown, B-29-15, which was essentially passed due to emergency conditions pertaining to the drought. So, this ordinance in effect produces a local ordinance, particularly to the city of Clayton, which is a little bit less cumbersome than this state model ordinance. So, with that, staff recommends that the City Council approve a motion to have the city clerk read ordinance Number 470 by title and number only and waive further reading. And secondly, a motion to adopt ordinance Number 470 with the finding that the action does not constitute a project under SEQA.
Thank you. Before the public hearing, our public comment, any discussion items? Yes, sir?
Just a clarification question from our, the presentation you presented last week and your summary tonight. Just wanted to confirm in case anyone really questions the true meaning of what's being proposed here. The city's following up on the new state requirements so that we are in alignment with those new requirements, as we're required to do.
Correct. The existing ordinance that is on the city's books is essentially superseded by the state of California's ordinance. And so, the ordinance, this particular ordinance would then put us in line with the current state mandate.
Right. We're not creating a new ordinance on our own. We're just complying with the requirements now of the state.
Correct.
Right.
Thank you. Any other comments? I will now open this up to the public for any comment on action item number 11. Please come forward, state your name. Seeing none, we will close the public comment on this and bring it back to the council.
I would move that we have a second reading by the city clerk of ordinance Number 470 by title and number only and waive further reading.
Second. Moved to seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all who'll signify support by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None.
An ordinance amending this Clayton Municipal Code, Chapter 17.80, Landscape Water Conservation Standards.
Thank you.
I would move adoption of ordinance Number 470 to amend the Clayton Municipal Code's Landscape Water Conservation Standards in order to comply with state law and with a finding that this does not constitute a project under SEQA.
Second. Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all who'll signify support by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Ordered. Okay, that takes care of all of those items. We move to item number 12. If there's any council requests to have put on agenda for future meetings. Not this time. Nobody has anything. No closed session? We will adjourn now this meeting of the City Council until our next meeting on December 20.
I will not be at that meeting. Just for the record, I will not be there.
Thank you. So, that'll be on December the 20th, 2016. And that'll conclude this. We will now turn it over to Chairman Keith Hayden for the Okers Geological Hazard Abatement District.
Okay, well, I will now call to order then the Okers Geological Hazard Abatement District meeting for December 6. And open the floor for any public comments. Seeing no one rushing to the podium, we will close that and move to the consent calendar.
Move approval.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the consent calendar as proposed. All in favor?
Aye.
And all abstained, since I was not here.
All right. Abstention noted. Next item then is the annual reorganization of the Board of Directors. Do I have a nomination for a new chair? Typically, we share the added responsibility and honor of serving as chair of this committee. So, it's, if someone else would like to nominate a new chair, certainly entertain that.
Don't everybody jump at once. I will nominate Dave Shuey to be the next chair.
I'll second that.
Moved and seconded. Councilmember Shuey serve as the chair of the G Had District moving forward for next year. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Congratulations.
Great. All right, do I have a nomination for vice chair?
I would nominate Tuya.
Second. All in favor? Aye. All right. Way to go. We have no public hearings, no action items. Any board requests for future meetings, then we are adjourned. Excellent. All right. Thank you.